All righty, we are live and in color according to Mike. So I will call the city council meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Molly, if you can help with the roll call, please.
Sure thing. Other person, Valdi.
I'm here.
Other person, Dean.
Here.
Other person, Grimmer.
Here.
Other person, Casson.
Here.
Other person, Iker.
Here.
Other person, Henry is excused. Other person, Baron.
Should be walking in any second.
Be walking in any second, but for right now, he is not in the building.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we have a special order of business for Ace wearing in of new City of Delafield police officer, Matthew DePrae.
All righty, how are you tonight?
Good.
I'm doing well. All right. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Matthew DePrae.
Matthew DePrae.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the city of Delafield.
Having been appointed as a police officer for the city of Delafield.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Hereby swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and partially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Wonderful. Thank you. Eric?
Taylor here. The pin with Matt's badge on it. Congratulations.
Serve us well.
Off to work, right? All right.
Okay, we will move on to iron number five, public hearing, A, public hearing number one. Topic, amend map seven dash four, City of Delafield 2030 master land use plan map of the 2030 comprehensive plan from the agricultural to low-density residential category on property described below and all amended properties through 2021. Location, Nagawicke Road East, tax key DLC 0781-989-004 and DLC 0781-989-005. Owner, John Legacy Farms LLC, applicant, John Spears. Matter, amendment to the map seven dash four, City of Delafield 2030 master land use plan of the 2030 comprehensive plan from agriculture to low-density residential category to accommodate a planned unit development, conditional use for a conservation-type single-family subdivision, and all amended properties through 2021. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this public hearing? Come on up. If you could just give us your name and address.
Yep. My name is Chuck Gallagher, and I live at 1343 Perry Lane in Heartland, and I'm one of the properties that abuts Joe's Legacy Farm. I have just three points to make tonight. First of all, that higher-density residential growth hurts, not helps, the city taxes, and I'll show how. The proposed zoning is not in keeping with the surrounding properties and is at odds with what the city residents want, and every effort has been made to keep us a little bit out of the loop because we weren't notified that this hearing was going to take place tonight. Okay, so it seems like we're heading down a path of higher-density residential development at the expense of maintaining the rural character of the city of Delafield. I'd like to point to a presentation done by your economic expert. His name was Dan Bodich. He's an associate and senior economic development professional. In three of these five slides, he said that residential growth actually hurts taxes on average rather than helps them. And his statement was, "On average, because residential land uses do not cover their costs from taxes paid, they must be subsidized by other community land uses. Converting agricultural land to residential land use should not be seen as a way to balance local budgets or grow in a fiscally responsible manner." If you have a cost of services study, you might show that this development will actually increase the taxes without decreasing services, but I don't, I couldn't find anything on the city website saying that that's been done. So, the focus group recommended that this rezoning be done to one-acre rural estate. But when you look at the SWAT analysis that was done for the city, the SWAT survey said our strengths are, number one, quaint rural and small town, and number five on there was large lots, single-family residential. There was no mention anywhere in the strengths of development. However, in weaknesses, the second point says desire for more diverse residential housing in neighborhoods, but also a desire to avoid overdevelopment. And then, under the threats, under that SWAT analysis, development was listed as third on the list. So the residents of the city of Delafield are telling you that they want lower density, not higher density. If you look at the common council, I mean, the planning commission meeting notes, or actually, it's the Economic Development Focus Group, meeting notes from July 20th, where the vote was taken, you'll see that the motion by Valdi, seconded by Cranky to approve option A, holding opposed, motion carried, but there was a note that says, "Opposition was related to variable discussion on western parcels, which may warrant leaving it unchanged." So that was from the very focus group that recommended the changes. They weren't even sure of their recommendation. And then, you know, the economic experts and the focus group themselves weren't sure, I mean, the focus group wasn't sure of their recommendation. Economic experts say this may not be a good way to do the development. I don't think all the right studies have been done, so take time, do your homework. When all said and done, I think John Spheres is going to do a great job on the development. I really do. My only concern is that I think it should be done at the two-acre rural estate, as it was originally planned, not at a one-acre level. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. Who'd like to be next? Come on up, sir.
Jason Harned, H-A-R-N-E-D, at 1423 Perry Lane. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. In order not to be redundant and repeat some of the same things that Chuck Gallagher said, I do want to say that I agree with what he's, what he said up here. I oppose the rezoning as presented. I'm going to agree with the focus group. It would have been nice if some of the neighboring community who butts up to this property would have been involved in that for their input, being taxpayer residents, because some of the people in the focus group do not even live in the city of Delafield. So, I also want to state for the record, and I could be wrong, but I believe that we should have received a 10-day notice of this meeting, and because we did not receive a proper notice, I believe this meeting of rezoning should be postponed until a proper notice is given. To the matter of rezoning, I would like to ask for proof that this development will not cost us, the taxpayers, any additional taxes. According to the same study that Chuck was speaking of, the Cost of Community Services Studies, a fiscal analysis for municipal planning, which bears the City of Delafield logo on it, page three states the same thing that Chuck said, on average, that residential land uses do not cover their costs, but one thing Chuck didn't cover is there, on that page, is a graph. And the graph said, says that for every dollar of revenue generated by tax money, that it costs the city a dollar sixteen. So with doubling the homes, taking this from an RE1 PUD instead of an RE2, you're doubling the homes of the surrounding area, and from this own study, it's costing the city 16 cents per every dollar raised. So I would also like to know if there's studies and proof that this will not raise taxes on the community. Lastly, from the last planning meeting, the gentleman who brought the motion up to convert this from RE2 to RE1 kept asking the question, to which the public did not have a chance to respond. He asked the question, he didn't see the difference between one or two acres. So he put forth the motion that passed as one acre. I'd like to address that. I believe our city engineer addressed it by using the term cookie cutter. I'd like to address it in square feet in a small analogy. One acre is 43,560 square feet. Two acres is 87,120 square feet. Two acres is double of one acre. A fun fact from the Packers' website I found interesting, Lambeau Field turf area is 87,000 square feet, just short of two acres. If there was not much of a difference between one and two acres, the Packers would play on a 50-yard field. Because we cut the turf area in half, we'd have room for one team. I say that jokingly, but there's a substantial difference between one and two acres. Two acres completely surrounds this entire development area. In order for continuity, this development, in my opinion, should be rezoned RE2 to keep the rural tradition of the city of Delafield. At least at RE2, according to the Cost of Community Services, this would cost the city half as much deficit, losing 16 cents for services per dollar of tax revenue raised. The development is good for the city on one hand, but it costs the city money. It only makes sense to me to cut the homes in half and be, and have continuity of the area. Also, the surrounding area, which has one residential home on two acres now, with this proposal, with a 15-to-30-foot setback off the rear of our properties, they are putting four homes on a two-acre site due to the PUD addition. So with the PUD addition, they get to use a joint land to equal one acre, but all the homes that surround our properties are all on half-acre lots. I ask how this is fair and good to the surrounding neighbors. In order to generate revenue at a loss, according to the figures I presented, we, the surrounding neighbors, I don't believe are being heard. We were not given proper notice, and it almost seems like this is a predetermined outcome. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate your comments.
Appreciate it.
Who would like to be next? Come on up. Is there somebody behind the pole back there? Okay.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Trout. I live at N-41W-33435, Neshota Road.
Can you please repeat that, yeah, and speak into the mic, please?
And spell your last name. And what was the address again? N-41W-33435, Neshota Road. Thank you. So I just wanted to speak in support of the rezoning. I have no indecent family. I know that they've lovingly taken care of this property for years and have been very thoughtful in their consideration in how to, who and how to sell it to a developer that will respect the property. I live in a similar part of town where there's a similar development happening, sort of in my backyard, and I understand, you know, I have a few acres and the other lots are going to be smaller acreages, but the way that it's developed and with open spaces for a whole neighborhood, I think it's actually a nice way for everyone to be able to use the space. So that's really all I have to say.
Well said. Thank you very much. The gentleman behind the pole.
I'm Dan DiAmore. I'm 2755 Horseshoe Bend. I see on tonight's agenda, 11, mayor's report, that Mike Hussman's being nominated, signed in. I don't know what that really means. Has he been approved by the city council?
Yes. This is kind of a one-way conversation. We'll get to that on the rest of the agenda.
I guess my question is, many of my neighbors, some of the people that are on the lake who are snowbirds, have said, "Oh, my gosh, this is being ramrodded through." And it seems that we have been, very little information's been given us ahead of time so that we could actually better understand what the plan is. And I have nothing against Mike, but my understanding is, he hasn't been sworn in yet, yet he had a chance to vote on last month's planning commission, and I just don't understand that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you much. Who else would like to be next? Just a reminder, this is for the public hearing, which is the two items I read off.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Michael DiAmore. Can you hear me? Michael DiAmore, 2812 Horseshoe Bend. There is so much wrong with the fact that we're even having this meeting tonight. It's my opinion that our planning commission has had a complete disregard for the wishes of our Delafield citizens. There has been next to no notice for any of us to even know what is being, what was being proposed, and when we were given the chance to speak, the evening was perfunctory at best. I believe the planning commission already had a predetermined decision for the rezoning question. The city roads are crowded and chaotic. Gulf Road is backed up 10 to 15 cars, cars long at times. 83 is a traffic jam much of the day. There have been accidents at our intersection, which is 83 and Oakwood, day and night. One of those accidents resulted in someone running from the police into our yard. And speaking of the police, we now live in a city where our law enforcement is being shot at. This is the Delafield that our recent planning commission has helped build. Their answer to these problems and so many more? Bring in more development. Now, I understand that our farms are being plowed under and our homes are, and homes are taking their place, but this needs to be done responsibly. Here we are again in the situation where the developer is asking to squeeze in three times the homes that zoning allows, and the planning commission was actually making passive arguments on Spheres' behalf. They spoke of his considerable expense in bringing in city sewer and water. Another comment was made saying, "He didn't see the difference between allowing building on one-acre plots versus two." And that argument, by the way, already disregarded the three-acre zoning law that currently exists. When a developer was attempting, was attempting to convert the Seven Seas this summer, the board denied his request, in large part due to the fact that it didn't conform with the surrounding homes, nor was it in the spirit of the master plan. It was said plainly by one of your members that zoning goes hand-in-hand with the master plan. I understand that this land is set for development, but to allow these homes to be built on half-acre plots is in complete disregard to the zoning and master plan. Ultimately, this is a desperate grab for taxes. The city is chasing its tail, bringing in more people while spending more on services. I could go on and on, but the bottom line is this. Delafield is a very special place. The peace and serenity that once was is very quickly disappearing through matters such as this. And the very real tragedy is, once it's gone, it is gone forever. Please represent the people's wishes and deny this proposal.
Thank you very much for your comments. Who would like to be next? Anyone else for public hearing? Oh, gentleman in the back.
Chuck Morancheck, M-O-R-A-N-C-H-E-K, 2609 Horseshoe Bend, Heartland, Wisconsin. Again, like other speakers have said, I'm not going to reiterate what they already spoke of. I just agree with what they've said, and I too would like to compel this body to just slow it down. I don't understand the urgency of ramrodding this through. It makes no sense. And last, at the plan commission, the mayor himself said, after a lot of people asked to just slow this down, the mayor said, "Just a reminder, folks, this is the first preliminary presentation for this applicant. They will be back potentially two or three more times over two, maybe three-month period. So just keep that in mind." What does that mean? To me, that says that this was early stages of this proposal, so why, if that's true, then why, why the urgency to get this all passed and change the zoning? This is a 30-year plan. It's, why? Why the hurry? Let people get a grip on what's going on. And I saw a lot of plan commission members last week that, in my opinion, they themselves didn't understand all that was being proposed and the whole concept of how this works. I agree. A lot of people moved to Delafield because it's, it's local, but it's rural. And this mayor seems to really be pushing to get this as urban as possible. The boulevard that was put on Price Road, the sidewalks that are going in around the city, and now this dense population rezoning, why are we in such a hurry to make this an urban development? I really would like to see it stay rural. And again, like I said last time, and a lot of the people have said, nobody's against this development. We all know that that land is going to be developed. No problem with that, and I agree. I'm sure John Spheres is going to make it a beautiful development, but not at half-acre lots. Please, please, don't vote to approve this right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, Mark Schaefer, 2106 Evergreen Lane, Delafield. I do have to agree with some of the previous comments, and I think we can trust Spheres to be a conscientious and good developer and bring a good development to this city. It's nice to have farmland around. It's quaint, but not realistic. You know, we're not really a farming community. We're a city, and a development like this, you know, developments are going to happen. And, you know, I'm glad we have a developer with a good reputation. When we hear half-acre lots, I think it's easy to overreact, but we have to consider that there's green space, there's conservancy in the middle of all this. So there's only 29 houses on 35 acres. I live in the development directly to the west of this. I have one acre. A lot of my neighbors are on less than an acre, so half-acre lots. And there is no shared green space, no conservancy. So the density is, in some areas, is actually, some of the surrounding areas is actually less than what's being proposed here. So in that respect, it really does seem like this is an appropriate next step for this area. I don't think we have any, any realistic objections to something like this at that location. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. They're appreciated. Anyone else?
Can I make one clarification?
Real quick. We usually don't have people come twice, but please make it quick.
Yeah, just want to make one clarification. Mr. Schaefer does not live just to the west of the development. It's completely surrounded by two-acre rural estate. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay. I thought I saw one other hand come up in the back there at the last second. Come on up. Thanks, Jackie.
Hi, my name's Laura Morancheck, and I live at 2609 Horseshoe Bend. And I just want to thank you for hearing our comments, and I also want to point out some, just some things that I've noticed over the past. The comment about the Seven Seas being rejected, I find that very interesting because, guess what? It's on the lake, right? So all of a sudden, there's this big hook to do about the lake property and what's going to go there. It seems to me, after watching a lot of the, a lot of the videos for the council members, the plan commission, the lake welfare committees, all of those things, you guys are really focused on the lake, property owners. You're not listening to the rest of us. You don't care about us. That's how we feel. Because this designation of two acres, well, it's really three acres on the master plan, but they want to push it to one acre, and then they're using the conservancy land, the land that's not buildable. There's no way you can build on the hill off of Nagawicca. So they're throwing that in and saying, "Well, this is a one-acre lot," but really, it's a half-acre lot. I agree with, I don't know who spoke about it, but it does, it is going to increase our services. Do you have a plan for that? Do we have additional DPW workers going to be planned? Do you have plans to have, you know, trucks and everything else coming in to support this dense population? I just, I'm against it, but I am for the development of the farmland. No, we are not a farming community. That's an insult to even think that we're, that's ignorant to think that we are a farming community. We are not. We know that that land is going to be developed, but we would like it to be developed with the, in the good faith of the master plan, to keep that in mind. Just to say that the three-acre lots, we want to do two acres, that's okay with us. But to say that, well, it's a one acre, but it's really half acre because of the conservancy and the green space and everything else, that, to me, is disingenuous. So I'm going to ask that the council vote to just slow this down. Vote no on. Vote no on this for tonight. Go back to the planning commission, have another discussion with the planning commission about some of the details, the studies that are not done. Has there been an environmental study done? Has there been a nature study done? Has there been a traffic study done? All these things that we have questions about. We got notice for the plan commission the day before the plan commission was supposed to meet. And we had to have public comments in by noon if we wanted to be heard. And I'm like, wait, what? We didn't even know about this. So I'm asking for more time to give our neighbors a time to think about this. And yes, it's going to be developed, we know that. I also find it very interesting that the gentleman who lives on Evergreen, who says he has an acre lot or whatever, he's got a 900 acre lake to play with. So it's not that he doesn't have any land. He does. Those of us that are not fortunate enough to live on the lake, we like our privacy, we like the setting that we have. And I would like to see Dellafield continue with that, that little nugget. That's, it's a gem. So thank you very much for your time.
Great, we appreciate your time and your comments. Is there anyone else? Oh, come on up.
What do I want to say? I just want to tell you, I do not have statistics, and I don't have facts, and I can't quote this, and I can't quote that, but what I can tell you is this. The time that it was allotted to let my neighbors, my friends, and the people who live on the lake, snowbirds, have a part of this, to share their ideas, their oppositions specifically, was not given a fair opportunity to do so. And so I represent not just myself, but dozens of other people that I've spoken to that did not have time to make a petition to present to you people. But if we had a position, it would be dozens of people that are opposing this. So I'm asking you, as a representative, more than just myself, dozens of people, to consider this objection that so many people have. And one thing that just came to mind, I'd like to share with you. I was talking to an inspector that said 10 cars per household would be coming and going for each, 10 cars coming and going per house. So we're looking at 29 houses being built in this area with 10 cars coming and going per day. That traffic study is really important because we're right off of 83. And that has not been done either. So I just wanted to add that. Please reconsider the vote from the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak to this public hearing? Going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. We will move on to item number six, approval of minutes of the January 17, 2022 common council meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, now we'll move on to citizens' comments for other things on or off the agenda. Any other citizens comment? Mary, come on up.
Chibicha.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel, and I live here in Dellafield at 309 Wisconsin Avenue. This evening, I'd like to speak to some things on the agenda. One of them is the report of the city officials. See, the city treasurer. Specifically, the 2022 Treasurers Report, which is on page 174 of 175 pages. Specifically, the Capitol Project Summary, which has a date of 1/3/22. My thought, or my concerns, is this piece of paper. And if you look at the top of it, you see years 2007, 15, 16, 17, and 19, all have projects that are still open or, as noted on the side, active. May 3 of last year, during my citizens' comments, I asked why several of the 2017 projects were still open. And Mr. Hafner replied with a letter to all of you detailing the budget and actual costs for those that year. In this January 2022, they are still active, as well as '07, 15, 16, and 19. My question is, are they complete? And if not, why not? I'm unsure with my next question where it should go, so I picked the Treasurers Report. Please excuse me if I'm wrong. In October 4 of '21, at a common council meeting under citizens' comments, under number six on the agenda, a resolution to set the 2022 impact fees schedule for Dellafield. There were errors in that statement of values municipal property insurance company report and the property and open municipal insurance company report. My question is, has this been updated? So thank you all for what you do, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, come on up.
My name is Jackie Lyden, L-Y-D-E-N, and I live at 1614 West Shore Drive here in Dellafield. I'd like to talk tonight about an idea that seems to be a perennial bad one, and that is about the St. Johns Bay Pier, a bad idea that should have been retired when it became apparent that it was a super divisive project, serving the needs of only a few at the expense of the many. And unfortunately, that kind of thinking in this town, serving the needs of exclusionary wants and desires at the expense of the many, permeates the top-down, no consult style of certain elements of current Dellafield administration. A much better idea would be to take this money, set aside for the pier, and apply it to the needed dam repair, a project from which everyone will benefit. We all need the Bark, the Bark River levels and the lake levels to remain as healthy as they possibly can. The dam is a repair the city needs. The pier project is an expensive new vanity that a few, and a very few select connected people want. Again, this should be a no-brainer. Spend the money that you have, not the money you fudged around, wish you had, think you will have two years from now, et cetera, on pet projects. And indeed, this pier is such a pet project, it might as well be called Pet Project Pier. We need to repair the dam. The DNR has determined that any pier project needs to be approved, not because of their bureaucratic, but because they have deemed that the health of the lake will be irreparably harmed by this pier. I mean, think about that. We have sailboats in the city literature, we all love, you know, the sailboat regattas, we all think about this as lake country, and yet, we are so often so careless and destructive of this lake. I said it years ago, and it's true still, good ecology is good business. We have got to be sensible about, one, our spending, which seems really crazy, and also our ecology, our lake health. So please don't devastate Lake Nagawicca with this ridiculous pier. Repair the dam, retire this pier. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We have nothing on the consent agenda, but I would like to jump to 12C. Tom, I believe that one is yours. 12C, discussion, possible action regarding the submittal case. Did I have that number right?
Yep.
Yeah, so here's the memo in the packet describing this situation back in 2002, the city of Dellafield.
All right, I'll start again. In your packet, there was a memo regarding this issue. Back in 2002, the city of Dellafield undertook a lift station rehabilitation project, and as part of that project, we were looking to install a separate valve vault at each lift station. There is a lift station near 1704 West Shore Drive. When it came time to install that valve vault, during the excavation, the contractor ran into the smell of diesel, and it was determined that there was some petroleum-based contamination there. It was a very minor amount, extremely localized. It was in the right-of-way, and then slight amount included on the 1704 West Shore Drive property. The city of Dellafield did the required investigations, analysis, and ultimately, the W, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approved natural attenuation of the contamination over time to allow it to naturally treat itself. That's been ongoing for 20 years now, and the DNR has indicated that they don't consider this a high priority site, and that's why they haven't been pursuing the city for closure at all. However, recently, the property owner at 1704 West Shore Drive is looking to sell his property. And in order to make it easier to sell his property and to satisfy potential buyers, he is looking for obtaining case closure of that, which is something you seek from the Department of Natural Resources. There are costs involved with seeking that closure. You have to do sampling and laboratory analysis, hire an environmental engineer to complete forms, and there's also a form submittal fee to the Department of Natural Resources. I told the property owner that there was nothing in the budget this year for the city to pursue that this year, so it wasn't identified as a priority from the city's perspective. And he asked whether the city would be agreeable to pursuing closure if he paid for those costs, which I said that I thought that the city would. So he did that. The sampling results show that there has been significant reduction in the contamination over the 20 years, and they do show levels that the Department of Natural Resources may likely approve closure for. And so in your packet is the proposed closure packet that we're looking to submit to the DNR, and we're just looking for the council to approve that and authorize me to sign off on any forms involved with the closure. I did ask the city attorney to review this issue. He said he did not have expertise in the area of environmental law, so he had one of his partners look at it for him, and he reviewed it and said that he thought it was appropriate for the city to seek closure at this point, and did not feel that the city inherited any additional liability by doing so.
Any idea where the diesel came from?
We have no idea where the, where the diesel came from at all. Back in 2002, the consultant at that time, his theory, which he had no evidence for, was that it may likely have come from some old underground fuel tank that has like, has since been abandoned. He was, you know, guessing that maybe some kind of heating fuel tank or something like that. But that doesn't make a lot of sense either, because it is out at the right-of-way, it's very localized there. It's not like there's a plume that goes to a house or something where a, where a tank would have been expected to be located.
So after we do this closure agreement, the city has no further liability?
We're still the responsible party, there's still contamination there. We do have a responsibility to notify anybody that's going to be, that might be digging in that area, that the contamination exists. They would have special requirements for handling of contamination, like if a utility company or something needed to put a structure in that area or something like that. But more than likely, any utilities in that area would be put in by directional boring and wouldn't have any responsibility for that done.
So what you're looking for is just for us to approve this, so that you can move forward?
Yeah, approval of submitting the closure packet to the DNR and authorizing me to sign off on any closure documents.
I so move.
I second that.
All righty, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. You're all set. No clapping. Okay, we will move on to 9A, licenses?
Yeah, the Marcus Hillside has requested an agent change. The city of Dellafield Common Council approves licenses, the liquor license. They also have to approve any agent changes. The background check came back clean. All the paperwork's in.
So you're looking for a motion to approve?
Yep, motion to approve the agent, Dawn, scroll back, sorry, give me a moment. Dawn M. Majewski for the Hillside Cinema.
All right, I'll move to approve the successor agent for Hillside Cinema.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to 9B, planning commission. Mr. Iker.
All right, so the, we do have the item on here to act on, but before I do that, I'll just let you know about something else that's coming up that we, we got a meeting on Wednesday. And there is a, similar to this, it's a piece of property that was identified by the Economic Development Group to determine if, how there could be a change to it. And the property I'm talking about is from the cemetery here up on Highway C, where 94 is, all the way to about Town Bank. So there's three items involved in that that we're going to be discussing. We had a preliminary discussion on it on our last meeting. And there's a couple of things going on. One is the, the current zoning for the cemetery is incorrect. It's not zoned as a cemetery. It's about time it should be. The residents are very quiet, they're going to be fine there.
You remember that, don't you?
We're going to. Quite exactly as a total disaster.
I think it's residential.
It needs to be zoned institutional or some such.
Be respectful. You don't remember that from the land use?
I do know.
That's one of the things that drew some attention there. The other one is, there's a, there's a lot, that's like a double lot, there's two lots right adjacent to each other, which if you head north from the cemetery across the street, there's a big empty lot, and then there's a house that's kind of up a little bit of a rise on the hill. One of our local dentists, who's currently practicing down by where the Olive Garden is going in, they purchased the property with the idea that they could put a dental office there because it's not necessarily suited or buildable for a residence based on power lines and other easements. So that's, that's, a petitioner came in with that particular request. How would we handle zoning to deal with that? And in addition to that, the Economic Development Group talked about what would, what would be a possible long-term upside for any kind of zoning change for the homes, the five or six homes then between them and Town Bank from there. So we're talking about that, and their big concern was, was traffic. And so the idea might be to create an easement along the back of those properties where you could have alley access in the back and not create parking in the front if we were to turn those into commercial businesses, properties as a, as a potential. We are talking about that at our next meeting. And this is definitely, we require all the input of the people that are involved in that, because we're not going to make their, just minds up on their property for them. But it's just three separate issues kind of linked together. If we're going to make a change, let's, let's discuss them all together as opposed to one at a time.
Are these coming up? I remember my Economic Development Committee recommendations, one through eight.
Yeah.
Is this in chronological order that these are coming up, and it just so happens that there's interest? Or are we bringing these up based on people showing interest in the said properties?
So there's a schedule that we published, but if we get an applicant that is appropriate for one of those, we are moving it up in the list, because not only is there a, we're getting two things, right? A recommendation from the Economic Development Group, but then it's tied with an applicant who would like to see action. So that will prioritize you on the list.
I would, I have some concerns about that as, obviously, notice is given, and everybody did a great job with notice, but, well, I would just have to think about my position on that. I have a little bit of a concern on that. It's because the, the message that I've sent out to my constituents is, specific to the St. John's property, and I know there are interest in the St. John's property that's, that's being vetted, investigated. My message to them is that this is the last agenda, the last item that's going to be addressed, and we anticipate that it could be April, May, June. And I don't want to surprise them with quick notice, get your act together, show up, be heard.
Good, good discussion, and I don't see that changing, right? That's a complicated one, that, of the ones we have, it's probably the most complicated one. Of the ones we have, it's probably the most complicated one. So that's one that's been at the end of the list and likely would not move.
As a matter of process, though, we can't control who buys property and says, I want to put this on an agenda. We're obligated to hear a petition within a certain amount of time. So that, we are not in 100% control over how those priorities are set.
Because if an applicant comes, we have to address it, right?
But, so I just wanted to bring, highlight the fact that that is coming up in our meeting on Wednesday that we're talking about that particular band of properties. And then the rest of the items that we dealt with in our last meeting are obviously in our meeting minutes, which are posted in there. But the item we do have to talk about and act on is the ordinance 791, which is what our public hearing was about. And that would be to rezone that subject property from its current agricultural state to one-acre residential, which is, the way that this came to the plan commission was via the Economic Development Group's study and the recommendation, which it was noted, was voted for with one nay and the rest agreeing on it. And the thought process behind it, understanding there are two-acre lots surrounding this particular piece of property, was that along that Nagawicca Road there, this serves a couple of things. One, it brings sewer and water into the subdivision. But the other one is, it also does a couple of things with a connection and transition with the street access to what then is medium density as we are on 83. And also it connects a proposal that is on the table, connects a bike trail that comes from the south to the north, which is something else. But the idea of the one-acre versus two-acre is part of the proposal that came to us and that's where the zoning, where the zoning decision came from. But the idea of half-acre, half-acre lots in a conservation development is something that was enabled about six or seven years ago. And the development up on Neshota Road, which someone referred to, is using the same type of strategy where you decrease the amount of road and impervious surface, et cetera. You increase the amount of buffer that stays natural or in conservation between that property and neighboring properties. In general, there's a couple of properties, if you look at the lot map, that are directly abutting, adjacent residential, some on the north of this are not. But, so, the idea behind this is, at this point, we're talking about the rezoning of the property and then next steps would occur with the actual discussion and finalization of any kind of a subdivision that would go there. What type of landscaping, what kind of retention, what kind of, you know, checking the boxes on traffic studies? And I know there was talk of cost of services as well, which...
We can have Tom go into that.
Yeah.
Just remind you too, sorry to interrupt you, Tim, but we do have Amy on the line.
Oh, very good.
In case there are any questions specific for the planner or the Economic Development Land Use Group, she is on the line to answer any questions that may come up with that.
Right, okay. And so to finish up, what this particular item is, is the plan commission did recommend that it come to the council and it was approved as presented as a rezoning to one-acre lots from agriculture, based on the idea of a subdivision similar to what's being proposed.
And the master plan has this, there was comments relative to three-acre?
Maybe Amy can answer that.
We can let Amy answer that one. Amy, can you mic her up, please?
Ken, can you repeat the question?
Are you on?
Sorry to hear the other people in the room. The question was if the three-acre, if the comprehensive plan...
Where does the three-acre density come from that some constituents mentioned? Is that from the master plan, Amy?
He's asking if... Can you hear that, Mom? Yeah, he's asking if the three-acre density that was referenced in the public comments here today is from the master plan. There were some references to three-acre density being the current standard. Okay. The current land use plan is agriculture. And then what it says in the land use plan, or the zoning, is actually A1, which requires a three-acre minimum lot size. So the land use plan is simply agriculture. Any development would require an amendment to the land use plan. It's the zoning that is currently in a three-acre lot size. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And what does A1 typically convert to?
So, so A1 and in the land use plan, it recommends that it be rezoned to RE2, which is a two-acre lot size. This stretch along 83, that's when the land use plan was written in 2009. The stretch along 83 was not served by sewer or water at that time and now it has been. So that two-acre density or even, you know, three-acre density, that's really difficult for a developer to accomplish due to the cost associated with the infrastructure and typically in areas that are served with sewer and water. That is where you want to have your higher-density development because you do have those available services. So the land use plan does suggest that land that goes out of the agricultural category go into RE2. But there has been, you know, quite a bit of change since the land use plan was last created. And I don't know if you looked at the comprehensive plan considerations that were in the staff report for the plan commission, but I would say that those are important items to consider in making your decision.
We don't have a motion this time. We're just open for discussion. I just...
Yeah, we're doing Tim's planner's presentation. I think we're just going to stay up here now, John. If there's a specific question for the applicant about the projects he's proposing, we're happy to have him come up and you can ask him questions, but we're really talking about the land use and zoning. Can't forget the plan.
I just want to point out, the maps I've sent out, that just passed out to us, the entire area around there is either R2 or R3. And in this green area, to stick R1, I just think is inappropriate. So I will not be supporting R1 zoning. And Tim, the plan commission was not unanimous the other night, I remember?
No, there was two people against and four, five people for.
And people against because?
Well, it was, the people who voted nay were myself and Mike Houseman. And so to explain why I voted nay, it was, more or less, the, you know, my position in on it is that although the half-acre conservation development that would fit into here, I think respectfully deals with the land and the surrounding areas, I'm just concerned about the landscaping and the buffer lines with the adjacent properties. And as opposed to waiting until, frankly, the appropriate time would be to discuss that and maybe vote no or try to swing things later in the conditional use plan, proposal, or not conditional use, the planned unit development area of it. That was, that's, would be, if this were to change tonight, that would be coming up in the next plan commission meeting. So I was just kind of getting ahead of myself in the process and saying that I had a concern along the lines of the tree lines, the landscaping, and how it imposed itself on the surrounding neighbors. But in looking at the notes in that already sense, it looks like Mr. Spears is already dealing with the neighbors on proposing more landscaping that we haven't seen yet. And so the appropriate time really to deal with that is in the, more the specific development process. But I, like I said, I got a little bit ahead of myself. I'm not sure about Mr. Houseman, but, and it was his first meeting too, but, so he weighed in without being shy, which is fine. But, you know, like I said, so it was 5-2 and that's my reason.
What, there were a lot of comments on that folks weren't given notice and I briefly saw emails back and forth late this afternoon. Notice, proper notice was given?
Yeah, let me, let me address that. So there's two issues going on. We've got a rezoning going on and a change in land use going on. The rezoning does require a notice to surrounding property owners. That public hearing happened at the plan commission in January. Those notices were mailed out on January 12th for the January 26th Plan Commission meeting. And that's the one that some people are saying that they didn't get until the day before the meeting. So again, mailed out January 12th. And some people are saying they didn't receive it until January 25th. For tonight, for the land use plan, there is no requirement for mailings to surrounding property owners. The process for land use plan amendment is not defined by municipal code, but rather by state statutes. And it does provide a list of recipients for notices, but it doesn't include neighbors. It includes things like surrounding governments, any other governments within the city, such as school districts, the local library has to be notified, the Department of Administration, the local planning commission, things like that. But there is no requirement for notice to property owners in the surrounding area.
I guess that's, I guess that's one of my concerns. While it appears that the letter of the law was followed, I have reservations about such a significant change to landowners, adjacent property owners, when the perceived, when the perception is that that notice was, while given, was late. We heard a lot of comments like that and I'm reluctant to move forward because of that fact.
Well, we should get this straight as far as what we want to do because we're going to be having a lot of these.
True.
I would agree with Matt that I, there's a lot of things that should have been dealt with in advance if people had more notice. I think there's a lot of concerns that have not been able to be heard, let alone addressed. So I, I actually think the development that's being proposed might actually work, but without proper procedure, I would not be able to support it. So in the future, I'm not sure exactly how we can do that, but I would think further notice, more advanced notice, I should say. And I believe, is there supposed to be two notices? One every, one, two weeks prior and one week prior? Or is it just one notice at all?
No notice to neighbors. There is a newspaper publication that was done.
And I'm not alleging impropriety, don't get me wrong. I'm advocating that in circumstances where we're making significant changes, that over-communication is ideal rather than the minimum.
I think development will happen, one way or the other.
Absolutely.
And I think they have all voices heard to try and come up with the best solution. It's the way to go and, yeah, overdoing it.
So, I don't know how that influences me tonight. I'm just...
I'm going to stir things up. I'm going to make a motion to prove this.
I'll second. I'll just mention too that before I was on plan commission and I had heard, I'm not sure how, but, so I've been maybe eight years now, but I didn't know where the Geeson property, this particular property was, but it's been talked about development to residential and just looking for the right time to get in there and do it for a decade plus.
And don't get me wrong, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And, you know, and so, you know, someone, more than one person used the term ramrod and this saw the light of day all last summer through the focus groups, meetings and the discussion about what would happen. And this was explicitly talked about a transition area from the higher density that would be planned and approved along Highway 83. And so this was not without, this didn't like show up in 24 hours into someone's mailbox. This has been rather thoughtfully considered for a long time. And, you know, anyways, I, and I know that when you're close to the process, it seems like it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. Always seems to be a surprise to, you know, somebody, but...
Well, I don't think anybody's arguing the point that it's going to be developed. It's whether it's A, whether it's R1 or R2 point here.
Anyway, I made my motion and I have, I actually did not look at the packet with this meeting, but I have a couple of months ago presented the plan commission. But the biggest concern I have is comments regarding the cost of residential development. True statement, residential normally costs, not a head on it. Best plate thing we could do is industrial. Then we make money. But Della Field has a unique situation in that the type of residential that seems to be proposed, like John Spears's, ends up being such high value that we actually do get a head on. Because you're going to take, you're going to receive the same amount of roads that you have to plow and replace every 30 years, 20 years, as, whether it's two, one, two, or three-acre density. If you take a PUD in, often you have far less roads, far less asphalt, far more set side of environmentally sensitive acres. They say, yeah, you can just do two-acre on here. Someone could also come in here under, because they're going to force us to go to residential at some point. Pick two or three, but they're just going to cut it up. Either add just the same amount of roads or they're going to cut it up in such a way that it doesn't meet the market. But I'm, the best example is water league. That has developed over the last 15 years, slowly at times. Possession. But at this point, when you see what those houses are selling for, their impact on the neighborhood, their impact on the taxes, that's a relatively great development. Oh, that was the focus. I've been around here a long time and I've always said, I don't want to lose our rural character either, but 83 is not a rural road anymore. And we will not flat two- and three-acre residential houses backing up that road. And I know this land isn't next to it, but not going to produce it and folks aren't going to invest in that property at that density in such a way that we will make money. In fact, we'll be forced to service very inefficiently. So, you know, I agree with the process that folks went through in this and I, other than my roles at the, I simply watched it. But, and I had one reporter ask me about, well, there are some people that aren't even citizens on that. I guess to the extent it was in the open, it's efficient to have even developers participate. I'll tell you, going back 30 years ago, in 83 and 94, we had a couple of developers on the plan commission. Some citizens said you shouldn't even be involved in that decisions. They put the toughest standards in because they knew what everyone else was. Look at the folks that are on, who are on that committee. They're setting the toughest standards, some of our green... So I agree with the recommendations of the committee and I think it's certainly in the city's interest to consider this adjustment, certainly to approve these.
Is this your district, Jim?
It is. And I will say, my brother wasn't here, but he called me. Lives right next to this and he's one of them very much supported. We came to one of the other meetings. So I do get calls from people that I know.
Just to follow up a little bit on a few of the details on the cost of community services. The comments made during the public hearing tonight referenced residential development not paying for itself. And what they were looking at is a page in the beginning of our study that looks at cost of community services in general, not Della Field specifically. And it was from a study done by the American Farmland Trust that had an interest in trying to encourage the preservation of... to encourage the preservation of farmland and the slowing of it converting to residential. And that study did find that based on 70 communities in the United States from 1992 to 2002, that in general, residential development for every dollar of tax revenue, there was a dollar 15 of expenses that came with it. For the city of Delafield, we found that the opposite is true. The study concluded that for every dollar of tax revenue that comes in from our residential development, our existing residential, that we have 97 cents of costs that are incurred based on that. And the study concluded that for res, single-family residential home values of $400,000 or more, that our ratio will continue to get better. For residential home values less than $400,000, our ratio would get worse. And, you know, a development like this, I think you're looking probably at home values of two to three times that $400,000 benchmark that we're talking about.
So, so that's clear math. That's math that was done specific to the city of Delafield. We paid a consultant to analyze our costs to come up with that, right? So, please don't, and, and this was part of the presentation, that if you recall, we had the consultant that was here that went over at the Joint Planning Commission and Common Council meeting, and he, he went through all these, these details. And the whole idea of this is so that we don't do the kind of things that some of the citizens were commenting on about not being cost efficient and the types of things that we approve. We, we went over, we went above and beyond and got custom math to make sure that we were not doing that, right? And when you look at the math on this project, it's very good for managing our operating cost and making sure that we're bringing in more than what we're actually spending for the development, significantly more in this case.
Specific question regarding utilities for this situation. We're talking potentially 29 homes across the street on Highway 83 to the east. We're talking about duplexes possibly once that's all developed. Specifically, the well that's in that area there, does that have a capacity? Would they have to be improved, or is there any concern about actual costs with, if we're going to provide sewer water?
The city water utility has capacities to serve the entire east side of the lake.
So the answer is it has plenty.
We do have some citizens' water bills that are in my district who have said, when are you going to get more customers?
And why is that, Jim?
Because if we, they have more customers, their water rates will eventually drop, because we have a one big fixed cost, and very, in fact, those wells probably could produce two or three times currently selling, without adding any gas.
I don't want, I mean, I would like to say a couple things. One, the water thing is, we want to be very careful. We have just 12 miles down the road, Waukesha, death by a thousand pinpricks. They don't have the water quality anymore because they've drawn it out faster than the aquifers can replenish. We're sitting in the middle of a drought right now. It doesn't feel like it, because everything is dormant. I was on the Economic Development Council, and I made the motion to approve the plan for this type of development, and I like it very much. I'm extremely bothered by the fact that, other than one person, nobody supported this, and, and it, it just, I'm uncomfortable with that. I think it's a, I think it's a very smart plan for a couple of reasons. One is economics. The fact that the developers can afford to build homes that they can sell that people will live in, if they're spread out like that, the development costs are prohibitive. At least that's the way I understood it, and I am not an expert.
That's true.
The other thing I liked is the conservancy end. I like the idea of leaving green spaces and leaving the topography of the land alone, and sort of respected the idea behind things with the Economic Development Council, at least my humble viewpoint, is that the closer you were to 83, the more likely you wanted things that were a little more high-density versus as you moved away from that. And that's all I can speak to. Again, the overall idea I like very much, the timing and the communication we might follow, often we do this as a city, we follow the letter of the law, but I'm not so sure about the spirit. And I think that's, that's vital. And so, that's, that is a big concern I have. I, again, very much like the idea, the execution matters. So that's all I'm going to say.
So I'll just, I'll, I'll say too, that this is, this is really reinforcing the recommendation that came from the Economic Development Group, and that the steps for reconciling landscaping, how the trails work, that all comes in down the, in the multiple future meetings in process. I mean, there would be another public hearing on the, on the land unit development piece of this. And so those are going to be ongoing negotiations and feedback and give and take from the neighbors and the developer. And I would have to say that one thing that, a couple of things. One is that Mr. Spears showed us several, and so, I don't want, I'm trying not to link the fact that this is a rezoning question to the actual specific development that's in front of us, but you have to realize one before you realize the other. And the type of development that's being proposed funds the types of things that we want to make this right. And you might, like Jim mentioned, you might, if you carve it up different, with a different development that's maybe, doesn't have the reputation or the legs and desire to keep his reputation the way it is, you might not get what you want. One of the things that's of interest is that part of the, what has been discussed for the actual development is, is a slightly smaller or shorter setback between the individual homes, and that's because there appears to be an overwhelming demand for ranch-style homes, even though these are going to be big houses. So that has something to do with the footprint and the type of elevations that are going to be, end up here as well, as opposed, these aren't likely not going to be three-story cell boxes. You know, these are going to be what they're going to be, but...
So in that, I'm sorry.
But there's, but, you know, there's other things too that Mrs. Geeson mentioned about maintaining an apple orchard, or, I think it's apple orchard. I have a huge portion of this property on the southern end of it as well. But anyway, there's, there's some amenities that are included in here that aren't, we're not, we wouldn't be acting on as a part function of the zoning, but we'd be expecting out of a developer and negotiating over the upcoming months.
This, I think, would be the ultimate expectation, whether it's this developer or somebody else, if we voted yes this way this evening. Anybody can comment on this one, Tim? But with the exception of the house heights, this is a similar proposal to the sanctuary, wouldn't it, as far as density goes, being closer? Some of those homes are, I think, only 30 feet apart. Is there, is, what kind of similarities are there?
About the sanctuary, aren't the lots that big?
Sanctuary is about quarter acre.
Yeah, those are smaller lots. This is, this will have the look and feel very close to what was approved by Anheuser &amp; Farms.
But I have 29 units on 35 acres.
Yeah.
That's, I know there's comments that that is high density, but that is, I think, a lot of municipalities would be very happy with that density.
According to, this is considered, one acres, you know, per the book, considered low density, right? Per the book.
Per the book.
To answer a couple of things. First of all, we, we can't make land use and zoning decisions based on developers. Don't tie those things together. What we're trying to do is make this change so it attracts a developer, and so this developer is attracted. So it does help us to have something. Of the water, city of Delafield did have a great issue with Waukesha. That's why we have this very expensive system to solve it, additional well. The final, final point, I don't worry about how close houses are together. In fact, sanctuary is maybe a good example. These things are selling for six, seven. Heartland, you've seen some sales at 900,000, houses that are feet apart. Actually, the market right now is the strongest. The problem, you, you plot out three acre lots, they're not as interesting as something that's maybe only a half or even a quarter of an acre. They pay the same amount of money. What we've done is, we take all the rest of that land, we don't plow it under, the woods and valleys. So, that's my point, that this is the strongest market out there right now, is the land unit development. Highly coordinated, a lot of controls over it, looks like, a lot of consistency.
Well, I like the, I like the conservancy. I think we all do. I like the, the low density. I'm glad that a, a developer can make money on RE1. I'm concerned about the, how this was, or at least the perceived lack of communication.
So Matt, to that last point that you made, I mean, what would you, what should we do differently in the future, is the question? And if another month goes by, does the situation change?
Well, I don't know that it does, if another month goes by. And I would agree with that statement.
We had land.
But as far as the future goes, and, and I know you and I have had this conversation, how do we get people aware of what's going on? We've had our Economic Development Committee. There have been articles in the paper. There's our website, the city's website. There's the notify me app.
I've talked about the last two communicators.
That's right, the communicators. There's your alderman, an alderwoman. I appreciate, but it's still, people have their lives, and maybe that mail out, maybe we need to do two mailouts. Maybe we need to do a month in advance.
As for that, the Community Development Study, I, I heard the answer at a presentation club. I think, how many postcards came back? Did I hear 230?
Yeah, we, we notified everybody, you know, we notified everybody in the city about the process taking place.
How many surveys were turned? I think...
I think somewhere, I think it was somewhere on 200 or 300.
And, and I believe we have almost 2,500 occupied.
I think we sent out like, we sent out to business, some businesses too. I think we sent out about 3,500 postcards and got...
Which is almost every mailing address in the city.
And to hear that answer frustrated me. Really, I got the post, so I'm one of them. I'm sure every one of us filled it.
But you're right, man. We've had this discussion, and we, in this process, have done everything we could possibly think of to tell people about it, inform people about it, and it's never going to be perfect.
I would have to just say, we may think we did, but there are a whole lot of people sitting here who strike me as above room temperature IQs who didn't feel like we communicated enough, so we're missing something. My suggestion would be, again, especially like just this case in point, when it's that, we don't have to send out 2,500 postcards. We have to send out maybe four weeks out, one a week, so that's at, at some point, it will be maybe 100 stamped envelopes or postcards saying, this meeting, be here. I, I find that, you know, we're missing something consistently. I, I, you know, I do think we post things. I had all my notify me things ending up in my trash folder. I don't know how. And I just discovered it because I couldn't figure out why I wasn't getting them. And then I found them there, and I just marked them as not junk. Boom, then they started coming back in. So sometimes we, you know, have to be responsible, but there's a whole lot of addresses from a whole lot of people who are quite interested that I think honestly, if we talked more, would maybe not be against this idea.
And I would have to second that by saying, if you look at the support for the gun club, Mr. Duro actually has contacted those people, and from my, from what I heard, there's considerable support around the neighborhood for his proposal. So they were all informed in advance. True, I think everybody here is expecting this to be developed, but the fact that this was going to be RE1, possibly RE2, well, RE1, and then with this plan, is a, really, a pretty recent development, which is why it's moved up the list from what the Economic Council recommendations were. This was not to be dealt with so quickly, but because Mr. Spears's development has come up. That's why we're dealing with this so soon. I just think process is really important to make sure that people are involved, and I think some of the things that Tim mentioned, you know, as far as what's going to be happening with the area, we can't go back and change the last meeting for plan. We can't require mailings for this one, but we certainly could do them, and I'm concerned about how we go forward in the future. I just want to make sure that everybody's at the table and having a chance to share their thoughts.
Just, just real quickly, Jackie, you mentioned maybe it's 25 properties. I think it's, it's quite a bit more as far as properties within 300 feet of this one. And then you take however many that number is, times you mentioned four mailings, and then you take it times eight different processes we're going to be going through based on the, the recommendations from the, the focus group. The other issue that we're having is, like I said, the mailings for the first public hearing went out January 12th. Some people said they didn't receive those until January 25th. Some people said they didn't receive them at all. Do we go through some kind of a certified letter process? As we consider all this, it's going to add up to some significant costs, not only postage costs, but also some considerable administrative time as well. Coming into this meeting, I was entertaining the fact that maybe we do, even though it's not required, maybe we do provide the 10-day mailing for the land use plan changes. We already do the 10-year, the 10-day mailing for the zoning change. And the Spears project is also on the Plan Commission agenda this week, so people received notice of that as well. I, I know John Spears has been in communication with the neighbors, so there, there has been a lot of communication that has happened. Whatever the council wants us to do, we will certainly pursue that. We should talk about whether we just want to do that as a policy, or, or do we want to amend our municipal code accordingly? And I would just think, you know, we talked about doing a mailing every week for four weeks prior. In my humble opinion, sounds excessive, but certainly if we want to do that, we can.
Well, the cost of a mail out would be, what's postage? I haven't mailed a letter in 10 years.
I think, I think the developer often pays their postage.
There you go.
Not maybe that for the time.
And the developer has gone out and met and sent emails and spoken to every one of the people that came and spoke at the very first meeting, to make sure that he explained, he copied me on emails and copied me on letters as well.
Spears did?
Yes, just, just so you're aware.
They showed up at the public meeting?
He followed up with every, I asked him during the Planning Commission, Planning Commission meeting that, that there was a requirement I was asking him to do, and he verified that he did follow up with each and every person after that meeting to answer questions and explain what his project was and so forth, and he gave me copies of written letters on every one of them.
And I know he talked to Mike Burns with Park and Rec, and reached out to him as well.
All righty. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Just to clarify, that was Iker, Grimmer, and Barron as a aye, and Cassin, Dean, and Valdi as a nay? Correct? So we have a tie vote?
Yep, mere votes in favor.
All right, well, that is all I have for Plan Commission. I'm sure you're happy to hear that. But we do have a meeting Wednesday, so please look at that agenda. This is going to be on it as well that day. And like I said, that's where the details of how the specific issues with screening and other fun stuff will be discussed and fine-tuned and negotiated. So, that's it for me.
All righty, thank you. We will move on to C, Lake Welfare Committee.
There was no meeting. The next one is in about two weeks.
Sounds good, thank you much. D, Park and Rec Committee, Mr. Grimmer?
No meeting. Next meeting is next Monday.
Sounds good. E, Public Works Committee?
We had a meeting. I did, I was not there. I know they worked, they, they had a, an information meeting on the Naguica path.
a, an information meeting on the Naguikha path. There are minutes. I see there was one, one person that commented. They also went into the meeting and also dealt with some of the tweaks on that plan. They also talked about the street improvement plan. It's in the minutes. So since I wasn't there, I'm going to refer to those. As far as I know, everything is moving forward.
Sounds good. Tom, anything to add?
I do not.
All righty, we'll move on to F, Delafield Commission.
I have not had a meeting since our last, our meeting. And so we have about six or eight more weeks before our next one.
Thank you very much. I assume no Police Commission?
None, correct.
Library Board, Ms. Valdi?
Library Board met February 8th, and you can read the draft minutes online. I have a couple of highlights. The library director prepared, and the library board approved the annual report for submission to DPI. The library is pleased and proud to have circulated and loaned out 195,936 items in 2021. We also hosted 119 programs and outreach events that saw over 7,200 participants. Library is pretty proud of being such a community staple here in Delafield. We have the Delafield event in January. 507 community members stopped by our tent, scooped up some hot chocolate, and heard about some upcoming events. Anything else, you can see on the library's website. Next meeting is March 8th.
Sounds great. Appreciate it. Next one, Zoning Board of Appeals. I assume no meeting.
Correct.
Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron?
Well, we did have a meeting, and I did attend that one. And it seems like our consultant or, or the marketing company that we retain has really stepped up, and, and she got a presentation of all the things that are going on for the money we're spending. And the other good news is that we finished last year very strong financially. So it seems like we've completely recovered from the brief recession in, in the hotel market. I believe that's all I have. I, I was listening to Jackie's report, and I said earlier, where is the market? Well, one of the markets we have is people's interest in the library, and that's helpful for downtown, it's helpful for housing, it's helpful for anything. So I do appreciate, I was just thinking about that because at, at Promotion and Tourism, we're trying to come up with, our marketing should tie into things we really do here, and that people appreciate and value in the city of Delafield. So, thank you.
And the library is a great model to follow.
100, almost 200,000 volumes, it's, it's.
It's, it's very interesting, the large percentage of people, it's called TNRs, true non-residents, people who don't live in Delafield but don't have a library, but can choose other libraries inside the county. They come here.
Yeah, they come here. And.
We're just so good.
They are. Okay, we'll move on to K, Lake Fire, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission.
A few things to report off on. We put in our order for our ladder truck as was budgeted for, for 1.14 million. It was actually saved 18% by getting it in January before Pierce Truck increased their prices.
Wow.
Yeah. And so that was a, a great thing. We made sure we got a performance bond, purchased a performance bond on them. And one of the issues that came up at our meeting last week was the possibility of investing in hybrid technology for the ladder truck. So just like it's on your, it was on your Prius 15 years ago, and now it's on almost every car available, there is hybrid technology available for the Pierce product. That, if you're ever at a fire, and I, God, hope you're not, but if you're ever driven by one, you can, the idle time on these things is enormous. The drive time might be 10, 15 minutes, but the idle time is hours. With the hybrid technology, that diesel idle will obviously cease, and lights and pumps, et cetera, can be powered by that, that hybrid battery. The, the hybrid battery extends the life of the truck, according to Pierce. The RO, the return on investment is six years, according to Pierce. That's at $3.50 a gallon, based on our usage. And there is 15 years of battery life and a seven-year warranty on the battery. The cost, which the board agreed to pay, was 23,000 for that upgrade.
I think it makes a lot of sense, because it's the future.
On a 1.2 million, I'm sorry.
1.14.
So 2%.
Let's just hope the frame doesn't go early.
Yeah, the frame will, the frame will go sooner than the battery will.
Right, Tom?
Well, how old is the old, the oldest one? Isn't it 20 years old already that we're replacing?
It's 20 years old.
Yeah.
We're going to sell it for.
I'm going to put a low number in the budget. Matt, isn't there like a two-year delivery on the production of this?
Um, we, I don't know the delivery timeline. I know we are first in line, that we got in before, since we got in so early, we got in before a lot of other bigger municipalities, Memphis and.
I think Matt said it still was two years. And I know on our plow truck, we're looking at 18 months. It's just gotten, getting pretty long.
It's a big, you know, it's a ladder truck.
Yeah.
Big piece of equipment. Any other questions on the ladder truck? Uh, the second issue is, I know there is legislation on the state level to allocate, to utilize some federal funds to increase our Medicaid payments. If you've been reading about that in various articles, that would be a net positive. If that legislation passes, that net positive would only probably be 40 to 50K was the chief's estimate. That is based, we don't have a high, not a surprise, we don't not have a high Medicaid population in Lake Country. I would estimate it at 4% to 6%. The third item I want to bring up is, I know I mentioned this in the fall, that our 2020 fund balance, which is the, the excesses from operations following 2020 operations, were identified in 2021, which was at the same time of our merger between the original three members, Sheniqua, Neshota, Delafield, and now to our seven members. That distrib, that surplus funds have been contentious, I guess a source of contention between the new intermunicipal, intermunicipal agreement, seven, heretofore known as IMA seven, the big group. So IMA seven was, has been debating whether those funds should be returned to the original three members, IMA three. And that debate has gone on for many months. And at this time, there was a vote last week, and discussion last week about returning that, those funds back to the communities roughly in the amount of 212,000. There was objection from the town of Delafield that those funds should be retained by IMA seven, the big cohort of us. And a motion, a compromise motion, to essentially split those funds, roughly 50/50. 50% remaining with Lake Country Fire and Rescue, the other 50% being distributed back to the original three communities, was voted on, and all communities voted in favor, with the exception of the town of Delafield, who both voted no. And Roger Yolo, who is my compatriot on fire board, and he objected to the compromise. That motion did not pass because one community can veto any motion. Any questions on that?
Yeah, how is this not part of the formula for how you deal with capital equipment, and what you bring to the table, and what's already there? I mean, it's seen, nothing's more capital than just cash. So what are you talking about?
I don't think that was the perception when the IMA seven was, was, that contract was finalized. There was debate whether this new contract was, whether the old contract states that when IMA three ends, you have to distribute everything, right? You have to clean your books, and all the money goes out. And so there's been debate back and forth whether there was termination of the contract, which would necessitate distribution of those funds to the original three, or whether this was, what was Jim's words, a novo, a new?
He believed it was.
He believed it was, yes.
Yes, well.
Novation.
A novation.
Novation.
Thank you.
The other option was that it was, it was just modified.
Yes.
And if it was just modified, then that wasn't.
Correct.
The way it was being read.
Correct.
So the debate will continue?
There is a possibility that the debate will continue. I, I think.
Is there a discussion about?
Discussions have to happen.
Is there any thought or discussion about having it, maybe some similar, arriving at whatever disbursement formula would be in, in, in the form of perhaps subsidizing future payments from the municipalities that have the, have the money involved in there, like to spread it out over into the future, like it's an amortized amount of money that would be used as opposed to bleeding it out, or however?
Right now, the, the town's objection, the town of Delafield is fairly, it appears that they're fairly rigid, that they believe that the entirety of the funds should stay within the new organization. And so various compromises might be viable to us. I don't know that they're viable to them. Skeptical that they're viable to them.
Is there any plan to expand the district anymore?
I have no formal comment on that, or under.
There's thoughts that it's possible.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking to, this would be a general statement. If we expand it again, I assume that there's capital contributions by the town of Delafield and the newer members who will have the same view, a different view.
Will evolve.
If you, if it evolves. So.
I think that's.
Under the context of that, without, let's say, okay, going forward, if we now have 10 communities, what happens to the seven?
Sure. I, I totally agree with that.
I assume that you're developing a surplus.
This year's surplus, the 2021 operating surplus, we are in the black. There was some concerns that we wouldn't be. I think it's to the tune of $200,000.
But the point is, if you're developing a surplus and retaining it, and then joining a new group, technically the retention is amongst the seven.
Absolutely.
I'm just suggesting an idea that it's, we'd come up with a final policy as we grow.
Well, right. And you, and you would hope that the foresight, the forethought.
Right.
Would, would, would be there for all partners, that, hey, we might do this again.
Yeah.
And so it might be in your best interest.
Let's figure it out.
Yeah.
But with that said, I'm not going to, not acknowledge that I think it's been in the city's interest to have this thing grow over the years. And we have benefited from a service perspective and a financial perspective. And so it's a little frustrating, but should we not have done it? No, I think this has been fantastic.
Well, and I'm not acknowledging that this money is.
And I, I'm sure the town of Delafield is like, yeah, we're really helping you guys out. You know, I, I can see them.
Yeah. And, yeah, and that, and our percentage stays within our, part of our organization. So we're not, we're not potentially losing that money. We're just.
I just, it's.
Instead of having 75% of money, we only own 44% of that money.
Yes.
So there's a lot of math here.
Has anyone, has anyone, I'll throw a dart since I'm leaving. Has anyone analyzed how many millions of taxpayer money we sit on in our sewer and water district? And we worry about 200,000.
Yeah. Well.
Just to put it in perspective.
But that can't be used for things besides sewer and water.
I know. But the point is, it's people's money that we sit on. No one worries about that. And we worry about the 200,000, and I certainly don't want to be unfair to our taxpayers versus the neighboring communities. But the fairness is, we, I think we've accomplished a huge service level improvement, and probably had some cost savings because of our consolidation. It probably vastly exceeds the money left on the table.
Just two quick comments I want to make real quick, is just to put this into perspective. Based on, you know, conversations with the fire chief last year, and the likely distribution of those funds, there was a little over $60,000 included as expected revenue in the city's budget to come from Lake Country Fire and Rescue. And as of this point, it's questionable at best whether we will receive. So it does create a hole in our budget for 2022. But then on a positive spin, just want to make sure everyone's keeping in mind that with this new merger, instead of paying 75% of 1.1 million for this ladder truck, we're paying 44% of 1.1 million for this ladder truck.
And we, it had to be replaced.
Yep.
And we get the old ladder truck.
Either way, we would have got that.
I know, but we're selling that puppy. Top dollar.
Yeah.
But I think it's.
The way things have been going, we'll have to pay someone to come and take it.
Well, I don't know. The market might be hotter now. You gotta wait over two years for a new truck.
That's true. All those federal funds dry up. One last thing. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom, are you done?
I am. Thanks.
One last thing. Western Lakes, which is, operates fire and rescue for Condamawak and Daughman and.
Summit.
Summit, Ashupan, that area, Lock Lavelle. They're actually going to referendum for their fire service. I think the referendum is either this summer or the fall. It's, I think that it's a $5 million referendum. And they are going to that referendum because they are having difficulty hiring and staffing, because the decrease of on-call, what's called paid on-call staffing. Used to be 50, 100 years ago, was a volunteer fire force. And, you know, and there wasn't a whole lot of costs associated with volunteers. Now the profession is evolving where these firefighters, paramedics, et cetera, these are careers. And so what's happening is that there's a lot of competition for these folks. The big municipalities, Milwaukee, New Berlin, Waukesha, they have raised their wages, as Matt Chief Fenig noted back in November. And so there is a lot of competition and increased, increased labor costs. And that's the primary reason that Western Lakes is pursuing this.
And so just, when you say they're going to referendum, that means each one of their communities has to put a referendum for their citizens to approve or deny?
That's my understanding, yes.
It's a sticky wicket. It would seem like every single municipality would have to approve it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you couldn't afford in a fair manner.
I'm assuming their intermunicipal agreement is much like ours, that any community can veto any initiative. But yes, I mean, you got, if Lock Lavelle speaks on their own, you've got, what, 700 people in Lock Lavelle? I don't know what it is, but it's a small, small community. Yes, they could.
So what's the prognosis or forecast?
I'm just saying.
The crystal ball saying for what we might have to do in Delafield.
So the labor challenges that Western Lakes faces are not dissimilar to the labor challenges that Lake Country Fire and Rescue faces. I think we have competitive advantages in, in our location, slightly more than Western Lakes does, in our training program. There's lots of opportunities to do lots of different things at Lake Country Fire and Rescue. You don't have the socioeconomic challenges that other municipalities have, Waukesha. You don't have the socioeconomic challenges that other municipalities have, Waukesha, obviously Metro Milwaukee. There's a reason people like to come out here. We have great schools. Catamaran and Arrowhead and the surrounding school districts are, are wonderful school districts and I think better than Oconomowoc. There's a lot of nice things, as all of us know, about this district.
Well, great. Thank you for that very detailed report. Okay, L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board.
Oh, that was the board.
Oh, sorry. Okay. We did both. All right. M, other committees, commissions and boards, dear management, Alderperson Henry is not here, so we will move on. Number 10, there is no unfinished business. 11, mayor's report, discussion, possible action on the following items. Accept resignation of Dave Greenway from the following committees and commissions, Lake Welfare Committee, Planning Commission and Delahart Commission. So looking for a motion to accept Dave's resignation.
I'll so move. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, number two, appoint Mike Hausmann as the Lake Welfare Committee representative to the Planning Commission to serve the remainder of Dave Greenway's term. So that would be, just to remind you, he is on the Lake Welfare Committee. The Lake Welfare Committee votes to appoint somebody to the Planning Commission. Mike Hausmann is their representative. And Dave's term for that role would end in four of 2024.
I'll so move.
Second.
All righty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, we will move on to 12, new business. Okay, A, discussion and possible action regarding resolution 2022-03, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Delafield, Wisconsin, amending the 2022 capital budget to add an unanticipated emergency repair expense related to the Nagaweka Lake Dam and a higher-than-anticipated bids for a plow truck.
Yeah, as indicated in the memo in the packet, we did discover a couple of months ago, a problem that developed with our stop logs in the center channel of the, of the dam. It appears that a knot in one of the stop logs dislodged and we started to have a significant leak through. And that leak has grown in size. And we've also started to see some boing of the boards. And so this, we've determined that this is something that can't wait for next year's budget and something that should be done within the next couple of months at least. It is a significant repair because it does require dewatering of the lake upstream of the dam. So the contractor that we talked to, which is Brennan Marine, they're looking at constructing a temporary cofferdam, having divers in the lake to install that, dewatering immediately upstream of the stop log, and then using a higher quality logs that will be not free and will anticipate it to last longer. But that is a expense of just in excess of $36,000. And then the other item is that our plow truck came in a fair amount higher than we had budgeted. I think this is the first time in my 20 years I've had a piece of equipment come in higher than we had budgeted. The budget was $195,000. The low bid came in just under $210,000. So there is about a $15,000 increase with that. And so in total, the proposed increase to the capital budget is $51,150. And to approve such a amendment to the budget requires five votes of the council in favor.
And then you're gonna add this to the bond? I take it?
Correct.
Well, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I have a question. So the dewatering, that's just in the proximity of the dam or that's all the way upstream?
No, it'll be.
The whole lake is coming down?
No, just the center channel of the dam and just probably maybe five to 10 feet from the dam.
Okay.
Very small area.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
I do have one comment that certainly need to fix a dam, there's no question about it. But I do believe this, we just have to spend the money on that. But these kind of expenses are just continuing to add to the budget, which I know I've said before is, is a big concern of mine. Here's another $50,000 we're adding. I really think we've need to do something. Take a look, I don't know, I would have to look at the budget to see what could be taken out. We've gotten one suggestion tonight. But I think if we're gonna revisit the budget to increase the amount of spending, we need to take a look at taking something out to try and keep things even. It's my opinion.
If the council has other budget amendments that they would like considered, I mean, certainly look at that in future agendas.
All righty, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, B, discussion and possible action regarding the creation of an Equestrian Trail volunteer maintenance program. Tom?
Yeah, our Equestrian Trail in the last year or two has seen a lot more usage, a lot more people interested in it, a lot more people living along it that have horses. And that has spurred some interest in having the city do additional maintenance. I've met with the people along there. We've toured the horse trail, walked the entire length of it. I've had the discussions with them about what the city does do on the horse trail and that that's been the level of service we've provided for a couple of decades now. And we really don't have the resources to do significantly more effort than that. They came back to me and said, hey, could we start up a volunteer group much like the Friends of the Barf River or something like the Adopt a Street program the city has? I said that I thought that was a great idea, but that we should have that formally approved by the Common Council. That's something that, that is something that we would like to move forward with. And then I did work with the city attorney to come up with a waiver form that would be a liability waiver for the city for that volunteer group.
So you need a motion?
We do. Motion for the establishment of a Equestrian Trail maintenance volunteer program.
I will so move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. All right, we did see, so we're to D, discussion and possible action regarding a request from Hendrick's Commercial Properties to allow additional overnight parking in the Dopkin Street Municipal Parking Lot during the duration of the 705 Genesee Street construction project. Tom, again.
Yeah, we, we did receive a request from Hendrick's Property for this. And after reviewing the city code, it actually is the, within the police chief's authority to, to designate spots as overnight parking. But the chief asked for the council's concurrence, that that's something that, that we would like to see pursued. And then he would go ahead and use his authority to do that.
And what is this for? Is this for, is this for construction equipment? Is it for employees' cars?
No. So this is tenants of Hendrick's that live, live above Blue Collar Coffee. They currently park in the parking lot directly across the street. And that parking lot, that private parking lot is gonna be used for construction staging. The project crane is gonna be set there. So that parking lot's gonna be completely closed. So they're having some of their residential tenants park in the municipal parking lot. And there's currently only eight overnight parking spots there. And they need, they asked for 12 to 16 more than that to accommodate their residents.
I would make that motion to support it.
And I'll second.
Is, is, is the chief, and I'm assuming it's up to the chief, but will he require any kind of a registration or just so they know whose cars are supposed to be there and aren't? Or, I mean, if he, just curious, if other people start using them that aren't the people that are intended to use?
I think my recommendation would be to first.
Parking campers there?
Yeah, first proceed with how we have the spaces now and have it open to anybody. And if it becomes problematic and there's still not enough spaces, then, then add on something after that. But let's try the simple solution first.
I was talking about that. Parking is the farmer's market. Have they changed locales yet?
That's all resolved.
Because if you're, if you're getting 16 here and then the front of it is all filled up, where are they going?
The farmer's market is gonna go down to the Fish Hatchery Sports Complex parking lot by the, by the baseball field and the posse.
Good idea.
People get more exercise.
Yeah, they'd been there before, so they were comfortable with that change. All righty, we'll move on to E. I made a motion.
We didn't vote yet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Thank you for the correction. E, approval of voucher payable report for reporting dates 1/18/2022 to 2/17/2022 in the amount of $448,053.89 for accounts payable and $234,396.88 for payroll.
Do we have a book?
I'll so move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, where's our, we need to sign them.
Opposed, abstentions passes. We'll get it, we'll get it, right after the meeting. Report to city official, city administrator.
Yeah, a few quick updates, just to let you know, as far as the city attorney and prosecuting attorney, RFP process, we have received those proposals. The mayor and I have both reviewed them. We've got three firms that we are going to move forward with interviews with, and those interviews will be conducted, one of them this Wednesday and two of them this Friday.
Tom, I don't know who those firms are. Is consideration given when, because there is a firm that represents a lot of different, the same, the same firm represents a number of different municipalities? I'm just thinking out loud that, given our close relationships in our intermissible agreements with the fire station, with the Fire Board, just food for thought, I think the Fire Board needs its own attorney. But maybe thinking ahead, if there are future conflicts, I would want a question asked how these firms will handle conflicts within their own ranks, meaning they represent the town of Delafield, let's say, just for example, and we have an issue with the town, but we're both represented by the same attorney. That's it.
Okay, definitely thought about.
Thank you.
On the list of questions.
Thank you.
Number two, the 2022 revaluation timeline from our city assessor. He is looking at finalizing the final field reviews in the next couple of months here. In May, notices of assessment change will be mailed out to property owners. And then during May and June, he'll be having open book appointments. And then July, board of review.
Oh, boy.
Just kind of a fair heads up. One thing that's coming out of this, our assessor said that preliminarily, it's looking like residential values will be going up more than commercial values. And so that would likely result in a tax burden shift to residential. But those numbers haven't been finalized yet, but we'll, we'll see how that comes Number three, groundbreaking ceremony. The mayor and I attended the Hendrick's groundbreaking ceremony. That was three weeks ago and I was hoping to see more digging by now. But we have had fences up, jersey barriers up, and I think we are imminently about to see a big hole be dug over there. So that's a good thing.
Did you say a month of digging, I think you mentioned?
A month and a half to two months, over, over 2,000 truckloads coming out of there. Yep.
Which, which way are those trucks leaving town, by curiosity?
Highway C to I-94.
Okay.
But they're gonna back all the way up to your house, turn around in your driveway.
We told them that they could use your driveway.
Appreciate that. Sure, just watch out for the dog. Wow, that just looks, it sounds like a lot of trucks going down the road. Okay, that is what it is, so.
Yep, it's a big project for sure. The next two items were Alderman, Kason asked me to include them on the, on my update tonight. Liberty Park stage update. I am pursuing contact with MSI, which is the group that has worked with the Arts Foundation previously to come up with a conceptual plan and whatnot. We're looking to get somebody on board to further the design and we're asking them if they are interested in doing that. I know they do have concerns about making sure that anything they do wouldn't preempt them from being qualified to do the construction. So I'll be meeting with them, but looking forward to doing that. And then, and a positive development with that, we have received contact from a private firm in the city of Delafield, probably not the firm most people would think of initially, that has inquired about naming rights for the, for the stage and purchasing those rights. So that's a positive spin that we will be pursuing. St. John's Pier update, right now I'm working on the Chapter 30 submittal that has to go to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. I know, Phil, you asked about design and bidding and things like that, but there really won't be any design involved. This is really, once approved by the DNR, this would be a straight procurement process. So that's the update on that. I don't know if you have any other questions on that?
Would, because it, that was last year, or the before that, the bidding, would that go back out again or just the same one that was in the packet from last?
Yeah, we would see if there's additional suppliers in the area. And if there is, it wouldn't be a formal bidding process. We would be, we would request quotes.
Okay.
Next update, Public Works seasonal hiring. We are pursuing hiring. We're getting very little interest right now. So if anybody knows of, anybody looking for a seasonal job, the city's starting pay has been increased to $15 per hour. And we do have extremely flexible scheduling. So if there's a, a college kid out there that's got conflicts with sports or other activities, we will work around their schedules. If you wanna work one day a week, five days a week, eight hours a week, 40 hours a week, we are interested. So if anybody knows of anybody, point them in our direction. And then lastly, we did receive notice from our janitorial service clean line that they will no longer be providing service for the city. And so we will be going out for a RFP process for, looking for a replacement for that as well.
Are you cleaning right now?
They are cleaning right now.
No, you. I mean.
Am I cleaning or no?
Do we lose them or are you guys like grabbing buckets and mops?
Not yet. No, we do, we do some of that. We do our own vacuuming and stuff, especially.
I do too, my class.
In the offices that need to be locked overnight and whatnot, so we do a little bit of that.
Sorry.
No, no problem. That's the end of my update.
What is the budget line item for that currently? Do you know what the?
I don't know the totality of it because it's divided up amongst many, many line items in the budget, from fish hatchery to fire budget, to police budget, to DPW, to city hall, to library. So we'd have to add that up. There is concern that the company that we were using did so at an extremely low rate. And based on feedback, both from this company, what they thought would likely happen, and from other municipalities, concern that, that the new rates may be significantly higher.
Was there a way to retain them or did they just say that we're, we're out of here?
We're working on it.
Tried my best to retain them. And I got them to extend another month, how long they're willing to work for us. But to give you an idea, they, this is just one line item that I'm aware of, is they clean, they clean the entire library every day for $400 a month.
Make it 40.
Are they available? We're getting a pretty good deal right now.
The total from 2021 was around $26,000.
What's how much?
$26,000 for the year. Mid twenties.
All righty, we will move on to B, city clerk.
So we do not have to have a primary, but that primary window has passed, so we are now moving on to the spring election preparation. We have a spring election April 5th. I spoke, I reached out to Heritage. So we do in-person absentee voting physically at Heritage. They have not been allowing it, but they are going to allow registration and in-person voting this year, so that's really exciting. One of my favorite parts of voting to participate in, it's always a good couple of hours there. So we're working on. so we're working on finalizing those dates with the, uh, special voting deputies and Heritage. And then unfortunately, we were hoping to have Badger Books launched by this election and kind of give it a, uh, run prior to, uh, the fall and, uh, summer elections. But we are looking at a late June delivery. Hopefully it doesn't get pushed off any further because I would prefer not to have to launch it before a big gubernatorial election. But there are issues with supplies. It's computers, chips seem to be, um, delayed significantly. So, uh, fingers crossed. That's all for me.
Great. Thank you. Uh, C, City Treasurers Report. December 2021 Treasurers Report, Preliminary Report Pending City Audit. And two, January 22 Treasurers Report. Uh, all that information's in your packet. Uh, D, Council Request For Future Agenda Items. We have some now. Speak up. Otherwise, get hold of the clerk or administrator before the next meeting. Hearing none. I refer you to correspondence in the packet. Item number 14 and the number 15. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 9:07. Thank you, everyone, for watching.